Is there any other comment on the... And so, we're showing here logistics, we're showing housing construction, and we're showing medical biomedical kind of research and sciences as part of this marking collateral piece. Beth walked you through the full freight logistics, but understanding that you're really part of a of a larger region of intermodal logistics. We're seeing now in Melbourne as a result of the major companies coming over, I kind of call it the first tier companies. The second and third tier suppliers are starting to come, so we helped Axiall Space Coast, which actually manufactures, they were almost a custom cabin, aircraft cabin, injection kind of molding company. They came from France over, was it last year, about a year and a half ago? And now they're servicing the aerospace industry, of course, that's there as well. So, they're working with Embraer, but they're also servicing the aerospace companies as well. And so, you know, the first anchor tenant brings off, obviously, the other smaller tenants that support and supply. So, there's no reason why, in terms of logistics and locality, that you couldn't service other, you know, Airbus in Alabama. A company couldn't do that from here. So, you could have an actual manufacturing plant at your airport in respect, you know, it just depends. And again, the strategic outlook, the area development plan is showcased here in terms of the actual components.
So, I just wanted to remind you with regards to the intermodal development zone section there, that Duke Energy invested in Florida's new strategic sites initiative program. And it was through the Gulf Gas and Freight Logistics Zone study that various sites in each of the counties were identified under this SSI program. Of course, that was funded under a DEO technical assistance grant. And this was one of the sites in Franklin County that was identified. And so, that's how it has been incorporated into the strategic outlook and area development plan. But the next phase would be landowner engagement, because obviously, this is outside the area that's controlled by the county, and so that would be the next conversation. In our work that we have done, there is backup, the civil summary and all of the civil due diligence that's been done on the property.
Yeah, we're planning, and this is the vision plan. You know, I would say that we did the due diligence and respects to say, okay, is there anything I would do to alter this plan? As it turns out, you know, we researched the soils, wetlands versus upland. This plan, according to our civil group, there's, from a cost to benefit standpoint, there's no need to change this plan, that right now, this is executable. And probably the least cost to perform that they can see. Now, there's just no other alternative in respects to how you use the wetlands and uplands for, more specifically, on the west side of the airport. And we've stayed away, you know, there's existing wells and stuff, we've stayed away from those wells in this plan. So, I won't belabor that aspect of it, of the plan aspect of it. But we, again, we have area development zones and targeted markets. And this page here really just focuses in on a little more detail about the intention of each of these, the broader vision, but the intention of these area development zones and who our targeted markets are. It also kind of showcases what we consider regional partners and partnerships. And, you know, from our perspective, that list is flexible and can grow and should grow. You should have as many institutions involved with you on this. Again, showing maybe the ability for avionics, showing a little more about the lifestyle here. And then, a sign-off page with an address from the airport manager himself. So, that's our presentation, I think, if you have any, if you want to take questions in response.
Let me just jump in, I certainly have any questions.
Sorry, Alan, yeah.
All right, so where we're at is that we have this overall view. We recognize that the, and I'm sure y'all picked up on it, that the property that we looked at, the rail connection is not owned by the county, but we need to show how we would connect it the same, because as you're right, Commissioner, we're not going to get a four, I don't know when we're going to get a four-lane highway here. It's going to be a long, long time and millions and millions of dollars. The DOT has not yet promised to try to build a four-lane highway here. So, our transportation network is airport, railroad, port, those are things we need to focus on. So, that's why we showed that in that characterization, knowing we don't own the property, but still, that's the access point we need to promote. The next thing we need to look at is opportunities at the airport through some workforce training. Now, the school board has a workforce training project in front of Triumph. Actually, I'm going to be hopefully meeting with Tracy tomorrow. Triumph is coming here to Franklin County, it's on my report, talking to our projects. I'm going to talk to them, maybe there's some corporate things we can get and help the school board with their Triumph application, maybe modify some of the workforce training to supplant some things we might be able to see at the airport. I think they're right about the Airbus prospects. While Airbus itself is not going to build in four, they're in Alabama. It's close enough by airline, by flying, that we're not that far out of reach for some opportunity coming out of those bigger productions, that we'll get some of this spill off. So, I think we're around the cusp, but we can just keep pushing at it. I hope to see some benefits out of this thing. But Commissioner Lockey, you know, I wish I could say there's an explanation for why 30 years later, you know, the airport's still as it is, but we just, I think, finally are getting there.
Right. One thing, I apologize I didn't address it earlier, but when you do these kind of plans, see that you're prepared, ready, anybody that you're dealing with, and I'm going to mention these opportunities, is public-private partnerships are a way to go at an airport. Right now, I'm doing an avionics school in Osceola County, but it is a charter school. So, it's private dollars that are coming into the community. It's not, the airport doesn't have to fit the bill for it in respect, they're giving them the land. So, the other thing is that we work closely with, for instance, Space Florida. Their mission is to promote aerospace business in the state of Florida. And at and around airports is, that's their playground. And so, I'm just, you know, there's other ways, more than one way for, it's not always the county that needs, or the airport itself that fits the bill for this development. So, I just, I just want to add to that, you know, there's...
And I have, the guy probably heard of stalking, but I have this SpaceX, SpaceX, I have this business card because I stalked it the last conference I went to, trying to get him to pay attention to Franklin County. And SpaceX has got tremendous, because they're basically a partner with the state of Florida promoting aviation. They've got some economic incentives and tools that none of the rest of us have. They can borrow money, they can bond money, they can do all kinds of stuff. And so, I did the best I could not to be harassment to them, but I followed them around. So, we've just got to keep pushing on this thing, trying to get a workforce in here and get an employer in here that's going to use our facility. And the last thing I'll say is that I have met with them, I've looked at the brochure, I had some critical comments to make on that. We are going to be looking at a Triumph application, I hope for something to improve an opportunity out there at the airport. So, I will tell you all now that I'll come back to you all in the next month or so with perhaps another Triumph application coming out of Franklin County. That's one of the things I told the Triumph staff when I went to the meeting on the 16th, and one of the reasons I encourage you all to have a cap on things, that there are other programs in the pipeline, Airport being one of them, we want to see initial development out there.
Any comments from the board?
Yeah, really, we don't have the two things going. Highway system is ours. We got airports. And the other good thing, we got one in which St. Joe is putting in a deep water thing. But they're going, they're going to get overflowed one day. Well, we got deep water here. So, we can use that, maybe overflow.
You're right, Commissioner. You're exactly right. In fact, before I forget, let me jump on this, St. Joe's doing, I don't, we all realize it. So, St. Joe is putting money in to build a deep water port. They want $60 million to dredge a port. But they're doing something else that's going to, that's going to work whether they ever get the deep water or not. Their Triumph project, and I spoke to Warren Jaeger at the meeting, they are asking for $28 million to build a floating dry dock that will be functional whether they ever dig the port deeper or not. This $24 million dry dock is designed to utilize the depth of the channel they have now. So, if they get that Triumph money and they build that floating dry dock, they don't need to have that port expanded. I mean, they would like to have it expanded for larger ships, but they will have a functioning economy and a demand for that floating dry dock in this part of the Gulf of Mexico. So, I think there may be a benefit from that port even without dredging it deeper if they get that Triumph money. And that's going to be an asset to us, you're exactly right.
Any other comments from the board on this particular presentation?
I would like to make something, Mr. Chairman. The other day, we were at the conference about the Atlas Cola River. And I don't know, I'm sure I've heard it before, but I noticed in a real way, apart from the river stuff and all the different stuff going on between Georgia and Florida, was the idea of secondary and, you know, smaller facilities being spread out. I mean, timing's everything, and I think it's going to be a really good time. And with the opportunities in front of us, I do agree with all that. You know, you're looking at, I don't remember who it is off the top of my head, but somebody's talking about putting a facility to actually manufacture cars. I mean, so, we might not manufacture cars here, but we might could get somebody here that's doing parts that goes to the people that are making the cars, or, you know, some kind of secondary industry. So, I really, I'm very excited about it.
Any other comments from the board? We appreciate you all coming in today and presenting us with the information. And I'm sure county staff will be getting back with you as it pertains to what you presented here this morning. Next on the agenda would be Carl Riggs and Ingram. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning, everybody, thanks for having us this morning.
Good morning.
My name is Brian Hall, I'm a partner with CRI in our Enterprise Alabama office. And I have with me Ryan Francis, who's a business development executive in our Destin office. We were asked to come down here today to present a little bit about our healthcare practice with relation to some needs that you may or may not have with your hospital coming up. So, what I'll do is just kind of go through at a high level our healthcare practice, and then you can ask any questions that you may have. Our firm, CRI, if you're not familiar with us, is the 19th largest firm in the country. We're everywhere from North Carolina to New Mexico and everywhere in between. We're actually based out of Enterprise Alabama, believe it or not. Our healthcare practice, I'm the partner in charge of our healthcare practice as a firm and also have a large healthcare practice in Enterprise Alabama. We have about 2,000 healthcare clients in our firm, and we work with about, it's kind of hard to read on that slide, but we're with about 60 hospitals and health systems, just depending on the year. We also work with some of the larger insurers, including ACHA, Florida Medicaid, and a couple of different Medicaid agencies. In Florida, we work with several facilities. Over the past decade, we've worked with about half of the critical access hospitals in Florida. Today, we work with various facilities, including Mariana, Bonifay, Bluntstown, Marathon, and a couple others I'm probably forgetting. One of the things that makes us a little bit different from our competition is that we try to be a full-service provider and that we do most everything that you would need from a CPA firm, including the audits. We do the cost reports in-house, the DIS surveys, any tax needs are all done, various reimbursement consulting and that kind of thing. So, we try to be a one-stop shop, so to speak, for our hospitals. We work, like I mentioned, we work with hospitals of all sizes, from the smallest facilities, critical access hospitals, all the way up to large academic health systems. But our bread and butter, our niche, is really the small standalone community hospitals, like the facility you have here in town. We understand the challenges that they see and we do our best to help them navigate those challenges. We also do all our IT in-house, which is a little bit different than most firms. So, we have an IT advisory practice in-house, which is all displayed here. And then, we, of course, in addition to the hospitals, we do pretty much anything else that you can imagine from a healthcare provider's standpoint. We work with nursing homes, of which we have several hundred nursing homes in the South, largest nursing home provider in the South. And then, we also work with several thousand physicians and group practices and hospices and other things of that nature. One of the things that makes us also a little different is we use a virtual audit process to the extent we can, which allows us to reduce the travel. So, it's basically an online audit. We still do visit the facility and do hands-on auditing, including partner involvement. But if the client prefers it, we do have a virtual auditing solution that we've patented, or patent pending called CRIV Star, that gives us the ability to meet with our clients at any point in time virtually and without cost to them. And that's kind of it in a nutshell. I mean, I think that we're recognized regionally as a good provider for hospitals. I think we bring a lot to the table. I understand the challenges that these small hospitals, especially critical access hospitals in rural areas are facing. I don't know where y'all are with your facility and where you are in evaluating your relationships, but if there is a need that comes up with audits, cost reports, or anything else that goes along with it, we'd very much like to talk to you, and perhaps the hospital board, about how we could help.
Any comments from the commission, question? Mike, do you have any comment?
No, I was going to say, get to my report, there's a hospital board meeting on the 29th. If the board desire, I can have them come back and do a similar presentation to the hospital board about what they offer, it's your wish.
They have expertise in auditing hospitals, right, and stuff?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
I mean, that's what I read in there. I mean, I don't think there's no harm in doing it.
I will, and I'll let you know, you know, if the hospital board has any results, I'll go ahead and...
Yeah, just like the hospital.
Mr. Cooper, to put him on that agenda and let you all know how they feel.
Well, you got, you got some new people on the hospital board with different ways of looking at things and stuff like that. I think it would be good, I'd like to know what the hospital board thinks about it, so, you know. I don't think that's a bad thing.
We do appreciate you coming in today, and I think they're discussing putting you on the hospital board agenda so that you can explain to them exactly what services you provide.
Absolutely.
And I guess they'll come back to us with a recommendation, sounds like.
All right, sounds good, thank you all for having us.
Thank you. Just turn the lights back on.
Oh, sorry.
You're going to put everybody asleep in here.
I don't know, I like that dog.
Already on him. Next will be Ms. Marsha Johnson, clerk of the court. Ms. Marsha does not have a report, yes, yes.
Chairman, may I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
How did things turn out as far as the clerk, as far as the legislative session?
Well, I think the Parkland shootings took precedent, and so, the clerk's bills that we had trying to help our budget were not addressed at all.
Yeah, that's not good.
I mean, I hate, at some point, I may need to come to the board and get some help, to help on my court side budget.
You've always had support here, so, you know, I understand that because that's what she runs her department off of, is fees, so, just like the rest of the board members understand. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very next would be Ms. Your Alan Pierce, store coordinator, report.
You mean he's not here?
County attorney's report?
I'm going to follow the clerk's lead, I have no report for the board this morning.
Yeah, well, we got that done. We do something besides sit here.
Sorry about that.
We just finished your report, that's all right.
I was telling somebody a fishing story, I forgot I was still working. Okay, all right, the first item, I'll parenthetically start off by saying, you know, Commissioners, I'm trying to solve a problem that hadn't yet occurred yet, and you all may say, since it hasn't occurred yet, Alan, we don't really want to deal with all this. The issue is, at some point, we're going to run out of money maintaining the Alligator Point Road. I'm trying to look into the future to have a funding source available when the road gets damaged, and we don't have any more money than Ballpoint Trust Fund. So, I say that because right now, we do have money, but at some point, you know, I see that happening. So, up there on Alligator Point Road, Alligator Drive toll discussion. For the board that I attended the March 10th after meeting, is directed by the board. The meeting lasted about an hour and a half, was attended by approximately 50 residents. There was a lot of interchange between myself, the residents, and a presentation by Mr. Pfeifer, who's here. Before I start with my report, I want to insert for the record the letters the board received in 1978 from DOT when the road was turned over to the county. I do this because I have had phone calls since the meeting from residents wanting to know the terms of which the county accepted the road. There were no terms. The road was given to the county without any discussion. So, those are in the file in case we need to look at them for a future reference. And I don't see anybody from after here besides Alan, so, there may not be much more discussion than just he and I. There are two options for the road. I told the residents that the roads get damaged in the future, the county might leave the road as a lime rock road. Or the residents look at some future funding mechanism so they can generate funds to protect the road from future damage. The Alligator Point Road is the most expensive road in the county, and the county budget does not include enough funds if significant maintenance is needed in the future. One half of the Ballpoint Trust Fund will be consumed in fixing the current 1,100 feet of damaged road. So, these are my takeaways, and I defer to Alan if he wants to add something to this. By general consensus, the residents do not want a lime rock road and are willing to look at some sort of funding to help protect the road, you know, to keep it an asphalt road. The toll road evaluated in the after white paper is too expensive to build and operate, with over 60% of the expected revenue is just going to overhead. So, the residents agree we should not pursue that option. D, I did discuss protecting the road with just sheet pile in the event of future damage, so that is one option, but the main discussion was about using beach re-nourishment project to protect the road from future damage. The residents at the meeting were willing to discuss the cost of protecting the road through beach re-nourishment. Mr. Bert Bolt asked about extending the concept of beach re-nourishment, so they went back to the original plan the county had proposed. The meeting participants seemed only interested in protecting the road. I told the meeting that if the community wanted to reconsider the original beach re-nourishment project, that they would have to initiate that discussion, because the board was abiding by the vote that had been taken by the community, that it did not want to pay for beach re-nourishment on a larger scale. So, conclusion E, in protecting the road from future damage, two options were discussed. Creating an MSTU or MSBU, which would put it in a subsequent on all lots that could be construed as benefiting from the protecting road, or looking at a less expensive version of a toll road, and I think Mr. Pfeifer called it a barrier, I forget the term he used, that was proposed by Mr. Pfeifer. Mr. Pfeifer presented a very rough economic analysis of how a system would work, and I have included his rough numbers with my report. I see it's already made it to the paper. I haven't had time to talk to Mr. Adam Singh about any of the conclusions of the numbers. As I told the group that, and Mr. Pfeifer said this at the meeting, these were rough numbers that he created, he's not an engineer, he doesn't have any idea how bad they are. So, I did say I looked at the, our engineers and just make an assessment on there. But my final takeaway of the meeting was that if an assessment could be brought down to between $150 and $250 a year, there was more support for an assessment than there was for any sort of toll road. I've asked the property appraisers to calculate the number of parcels involved point Alligator Point, and she says there are 1,225. So, if a $250 assessment were put on those lots, it would theoretically raise enough funds to pay for beach and road maintenance. However, this assessment is predicated on the board providing the initial beach through a combination of restore and FDIP state funds. If the board is interested, if the board is interested in pursuing an assessment, it needs to direct me to contact Ms. Camille Tharp with GSG and discuss with her the legality of including Ballpoint lots in the assessment, because I imagine there will be a great dissent from some people regarding the assessment. So, that's where I'm headed, Commissioners, is that if you all want to look at trying to create a funding source, I think the assessment is feasible, if it's legal to include a Ballpoint who theoretically have their own road, their own beach. And I just want to legally make sure we're on safe grounds before we start doing some sort of assessment.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Alan, in your item number C, you said the toll road was going to be too expensive to build and all that. Well, if y'all know that, can we stop that firm from doing more analysis? Because we don't need to be spending that $20,000.
That's correct, and I say, Alan, I feel fairly sure that everybody agreed that was not the path to take.
Well, don't you think we need to stop them people from going on?
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't started yet.
Oh, they haven't started?
No, I, no, I didn't, I didn't, no, they haven't started, I didn't authorize them to. You all said spend the money, but then when we saw that it was not conclusive, I told them I would let them know after this meeting.
Okay, well, shut the contact down with them.
Yeah, we never signed anything, we never gave them the order.
Okay, I just, I mean, I didn't want the $20,000 spent, and the termination by the people down there has already been made, that they don't want that.
Correct.
So, I mean, the other thing is, what you're going to see facing in the future is what we've seen for many, many years, and that is, right there at the OKLA property, you know, it got to a point where FEMA was having to spend too much money on it, and they stopped the flow of money to that portion of that road. The same thing's going to happen to those other portions of the road that were having trouble.
In my commission, I mean, I have no, you're right.
Yeah, so, I mean, if something's not done. And as far as the beach re-nourishment, only protecting the road, that's wrong. They're going to be protecting everybody, beach re-nourishment will.
Right, but we're doing a much smaller scale, so I'm only trying to protect that section of the road that is, that's threatened by damage. Yes, you're right, I understand, it would protect some houses there, you're right.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, that's my thought, but I think, my opinion, since I do represent that area, is for you to get back with Ms. Camille Tharp. But I hope it's not going to be as contentious as what it was last time.
And you also need to, you know, you're looking at, what, 1,225 parcels, including Ballpoint, which I doubt the people there want. So, we need to narrow it down to the parcels that people are going to get benefit out of this, I guess.
Well, see, Commissioner, that's where we get back to the problem, so I had narrowed it down.
Won't generate enough money.
Won't generate, or the price goes so high that you have tremendous objections from the residents. I mean, the consensus, I say the consensus, I shouldn't use that word conclusively, but the feeling at the meeting was, if it was $250 to $200, $250 a year, oh, it's, we'll all benefit from that. But if you start getting $500 and $600 a year, and you get that high, if you shrink the number of parcels associated, now all of a sudden, people are going to say, wait a minute, you know, this is going to be unfair.
Well, I mean, I understand, we've been through this before, but what I'm saying is, for the board can really give you direction as to definitively what we want to do if we want to open up this beach re-nourishment, which we offered to do before. And then, if it washes away, we got to have a structure in there that helps pay 50% of the costs, because FEMA's not going to rebuild it, but 50%, and that's where all this stuff's coming from, but I mean...
And the Ballpoint people get upset because we've included them in here.
That's what I'm saying, so we need more definitive numbers.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is there another way in Alligator Point beside that road?
Helicopter.
That's about it.
Well, all I'm using, that means everybody should...
Well, everybody on Ballpoint though, don't go down to the end of Alligator.
Yeah, but they got to get to that road to get to Ballpoint.
Where the break is.
Where the break is, yeah. I'm trying to include more people, Commissioners, because I'm trying to get the cost per lot down.
They have to hit the road to go, that's what I'm, that's what I'm like.
No, in order to get to Ballpoint, the road that's damaged, you do not need. You go this way and the damage here.
And see, you got a lot of, like, the guys that's got the scot, I mean, the clams and the oysters and the harbor, they use that road a lot, the commercial fishermen do. And they go in its sun and sand and put in that boat ramp down there.
But if, I mean, one logic could be, Commissioner, and this is just a theory, that if we do the beach re-nourishment in section, in front of the OKway, protect that mile road there, there will be a beach and a public beach, which the people on Ballpoint could use, because it's going to be a beach with, you know, sand and maintained. And so, you might get some benefit for the people of Ballpoint who don't like their shoreline. They could go down there where the water's a little clearer and it could be, you know. I mean, so, I'm not saying it's out of the room, the question, they wouldn't be, get some benefit from it, but do they need the road over here to go up here? No, they don't.
But was, did y'all discuss this at this last meeting?
Well, Alan was...
I know you have over the years.
Alan was sort of representing Ballpoint. But what we discussed was, the more people who would pay, the lower the cost, and that seemed to be the direction that the people at the meeting wanted to go. Now, how many people in the meeting were from Ballpoint, I can't say.
We got one at least.
Alan, you got a quick comment on this issue?
Good morning, Commissioners, Alan Pfeifer, speaking for myself. I am a board member of Alligator Point Saint Teresa Association. I'm also a Ballpoint resident. I've had extensive conversations with other Ballpoint residents. What we, what we as Ballpoint people say is that we, some of us are in agreement with the idea of either a toll road or a tax, because there's a general economic benefit to everybody from Pine Street to Ballpoint to Alligator Point in increased property values derived from having beach re-nourishment. There is an economic value to everybody. The only way a taxing situation works is if we don't do carve-outs for various constituencies that don't see this as important, because the price will go up exponentially if you cut people out bit by bit. So, you know, I'm not... So, you know, I'm not married to the toll road, I'm not married to the tack, to the MSBU, MSTU. I'm just married to the idea of finally getting road protection and increasing property values, which is a boon to the county and increased revenues. Thank you very much. If you have a question, I can answer a question. Our next, Alligator Point St. Teresa's next step is to have public meetings to determine the mood of the people. And I do know that even though Terry Madigan didn't authorize me, that that is coming up in the next thirty to forty-five days.
Well, that's good, because, commissioners, I don't want to mislead you. It will be controversial. There will be some people who are gonna hate us for this idea.
They ain't never liked me since they started hating me back the time before.
We love you, Ms. Sanders.
No, y'all don't. No, y'all don't.
There was a group of people there who thought a lime rock road would be okay, because they didn't want to pay anything, and they didn't want any more people down there. But the general consensus, that's not logical. A lime rock road on the shoreline just would be a nightmare.
If you got a public road, you can't stop people from going in there.
That's right.
I mean, you might as well come to a recognition of that. Now, you might can build better facilities to accommodate the people, but if it's a public road going off of ninety-eight in there, you ain't gonna stop them people from going in there, it's a public road.
Well, Alan, so why don't we do this?
Unless, unless there's a group of citizens that wanna, they wouldn't even have to buy the road, I'd give it to them. And then they'll have a private road. And then they can deal with all these issues. Other than that, it's a public road.
Commissioner, I'll defer to how you want to proceed, but I would say, why don't we let APTA, kinda, I didn't realize you were looking at some public input on your own. Why don't you do that, while I contact Camille Tharp, let's see legality, where we're at, and sort of.
Yeah.
See, we come to a meeting of minds.
Yeah, you need to know the legality of it and everything, because, and it's like the chairman said, there's a lot of things you need to filter out of here.
But, everybody knows, the more people paying, the less you have to pay. Everybody knows that, I mean, it's kind of, everybody understands that. But as you get into controversy, I don't get a benefit for this, because I don't drive that far down. And when you get into all that, now you're putting all the burden on just a few people, which means assessments are going up, and nobody's gonna be able to pay them, so. That's something that the people of Alligator Point, as Alan said, they got big meetings going on, and everybody ought to be invited and put in their input, but somebody's gotta stand up and tell them, look, the less people paying, the more it's gonna cost. We either need to come together as a community, or support the county as best you can, and we're gonna do the best we can, and that's it.
Alan Pfeifer's took care of them over the last twenty years, twenty-five years on that road.
What's gonna happen when it cut in half? Because there ain't no protecting, that road gonna cut in half soon as.
Well, that's why you put a beach out there, so the beach, you keep washing the beach away, and you keep putting it back. And admittedly, the beach is sacrificial, commissioner, it's there to be washed away. And so, the area that is the most vulnerable right now, according to the change, is the area for the beach, which is right, which is right here, that's where it's trying to cut, right there.
Yeah, it gonna cut in half.
So the idea is to put a beach from here up to here, fill in that gap right there, about a mile, and just try and keep it from cutting through there. I mean, there are alternatives, though, commissioner, you'd agree. That's a, that's a slew right there, that's a little slew. And so you have about two hundred feet, and boom, you're through to Alligator Harbor.
Yeah.
You know how to solve it? Take a dredge, boat down dredge all the dirt that's out there in the front of it, put it back up, barely to stop it.
Well, no, commissioner, that's exactly what the plan is. No, we've already got a permit, the small side is right here, exactly right, bring the sand, put it right back.
Yeah, put it back, and that'll stop it for another twenty years.
I still think y'all gonna have to go off the edge of the fit that's preserved down there, because that's where all the dirt went.
Well, and that's a concern for the community, because you're right, the sand is drifting down there, and eventually.
It's gonna close up the harbor.
It could close up the harbor.
And that's gonna hurt the.
It used to be a channel out in front there, Alan, from there all the way to Mud Cove. The channel that went up there, you run a boat all the way around to Mud Cove, you can't even make it across the shoulder now.
Yep.
Well, you should run this front by through that channel, right there.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one quick question that I can take back to our association? And that is, can I ask, is the mood of the county commission that Alligator Point's gonna, for a paved road, is gonna pay, just a question of the method at this time?
Uh, that sound like a loaded question.
Well, the reason I ask that is that some people are saying that, you know, we just should stand tough.
We're gonna have a paved road, but a matter of protecting it. Now, the next time it washes out, if FEMA don't reimburse us and help us build the road back, we don't know what's gonna happen. That's the whole idea of trying to do the beach re-nourishment and protect the, the comments keep saying, protect the road, protect the road. Now, if it's thirty years when it washes out, then FEMA may help you, but they're not gonna help you year after year, after year, after year, after year. That's what we're facing. I like the beach re-nourishment, the county said they'd rather, you know, we were looking at doing a a project to help get it jump-started and get it going, but there's this maintenance issue. And FEMA's not gonna reimburse it fifty percent. So if we don't have a mechanism in place to put a little nest egg back, then we're gonna end up with problems, even with the beach re-nourishment, and that's what's. I mean, the county's committed to doing that for the people of Alligator Point, but we need the people of Alligator Point to commit to helping us develop some kind of revenue stream to help us match this fifty percent from FEMA, should it and when it does wash out. Because they're not gonna reimburse it, they're not gonna help us but fifty percent to put the beach back.
Well, and actually, the worst-case scenario is that we have a storm that's not a hurricane, and I use Bunkie Atkins' lot as an example. Bunkie Atkins' lot is a beautiful lot, but it's not fifty feet from the water, and there's no short, there's no revetment there, there's no seawall. The water could easily run up there and grab fifty to a hundred feet of asphalt, and it's gonna be such a small storm that there won't be any FEMA money.
Declaration.
You're gonna hire a contractor for a hundred feet of asphalt, and it's gonna stay lime rock for.
Forever.
That's what's happened with it.
That's the worst-case scenario.
Yeah, that's what's happened with it now.
But we can take that in with the beach re-nourishment and try to help protect that section of the road, right?
That's correct, that's correct.
I will take this communication back to our board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, for we, someone asked a question, and humor me, I'm sorry, I don't know. What was, why is the reason why beach re-nourishment was not looking upon favorably to begin with?
Uh, well, not getting a long story, basically, in law.
Yeah, I'm not trying to do that, I'm sorry.
Because it was, it was, I would say, too expensive, people objected. They didn't think they were gonna get a big enough benefit.
We didn't have BP money back then.
Right, so.
When I say the county's running its system.
To be fair, the community, the county looked at the community, they had to fund everything. They presented that to one degree, and then also they called, well, they just presented that. So it lost by a slim.
Right now, there's some state funds to help us with the beach re-nourishment, match with some BP funds that the county has.
Right, that's the reason I ask.
Originally, they wouldn't have waited. The residents were gonna have to pay it, and the assessments were too high.
They were a thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars in the other day.
That's why, that's why I didn't know.
And what's happened, that's with the beach re-nourishment part of it, is this is an ongoing problem throughout this state. And so the legislature's looking at the beach re-nourishment. So this is, I mean, you know, probably, um, the beach re-nourishment's gonna be the best thing, but it's, just like I said, nobody wants to pay six hundred and fifty dollars a year for it, you know?
In the meantime, the houses washing in, go for Mexico.
Yeah.
So it's a lot of different issues combined.
And, and to the predictions from the hurricane people, or have as strong a year as what we had last year, and it could be even a little bit stronger. So, I mean, I have the predictions, and it's not good.
All right, okay, all right, so we'll move on to the next item. Number two, Triumph update on local projects. The city of Apalachicola has decided it does not want to prioritize their project, nor reduce their funding request to two million dollars. I provide the board with a letter I see from the city stating the city intends to submit all its project director to Triumph. The city of Carabel is also already below the two million dollar cap the county created the first phase of projects, so the city can receive letters of support for all its projects without a need to prioritize. In a telephone conversation I had with the mayor, she indicated the city might not complete a Triumph application for their two hundred and fifty thousand dollar city hall project, because the Triumph staff was not satisfied that project would create enough economic benefit to warrant funding. That's a decision for them to make, but that was the direction they were heading in.
You know.
Yes, sir.
There's something wrong with man. That man talking about doing electric problem, he can't take care of water. I mean, he got, something wrong with him.
He's talking about the city of Carabel right now.
No, I'm talking about Appalachia. Something wrong with it.
All right, well, I, you know, I, anyway, I'll move on. So at this time, I believe the city will be submitting three Triumph funds for a total funding of around one point two five million. The FSU has revised its Triumph application to be below the two million dollar first-phase cap. The county and our project department, we meet our own two million dollar cap. The school board has yet to receive their Triumph letters, I'm sorry, the school board has yet to receive their letters from Triumph, encouraging them to submit applications. So for the time being, it's premature for the county commission to act in the school district projects. So I consider them to be outside of the first phase of county projects. I discussed this with the chairman, with Ms. Tracy Moses superintendent, so they're aware what we're thinking about. So at this time, I don't see a need for the Triumph workshop, but I would refer to the board. And Commissioner Lockley, the reason I say that, at this point, the city of Apalachicola would not come to a workshop, they would not present projects, so you wouldn't have any more information to deal with.
That's why I said something wrong with it. I mean, I seen up the way, they got a project, talking about impoundings for electricity. He done put in a big old, big, big number, high dollar. And he can't, he can't keep the water going, how you gonna keep some liquid going?
Well, now, it's just like you said, Alan, where was it? Okay, right here, you said that the mayor had said, Mayor LaPaige has said that the Triumph staff is pretty much saying anything to renovate your city complexes or your city halls or anything like that is not gonna take a priority.
Right, because you gotta prove that you're getting an economic benefit in the community.
Okay.
But they're building a new city hall in Carabel anyway, right? Yeah, so why renovate, why?
Yeah, but she didn't need that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help out. But I'm, I'm just saying, so, all the projects that are submitted from Franklin County, if they have anything to do with building renovations, they're probably gonna be shot down.
Well, right, and the armory.
Not like the armory, though.
No, 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 no.
Economic benefit.
Right, it's true, it's true, it's certainly possible.
But I'm just going by what Mayor LaPaige said.
That's correct, that's correct.
We're gonna grab money out of the armory. But some of these projects aren't.
So, so, I'm back to the original question, do you all still want a workshop? Or do you just want to accept that if people are ready for their letters of support, so long as they meet our guidance, we issue them a letter of support?
Now, you're gonna have them coming out of the cracks for the letters of support.
No, only for the first phase, only ones we know of, which would be, right now, the three, the city of Carabel, FSU,
Okay.
and the county. And then when the school board gets there, letters, we come back and talk to you all.
So that's not all those little private thing, you know, all those little associations and stuff that's wanted to submit. So it would be just the governmental time.
Yes.
Well, can I?
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Didn't you say they weren't, they said they wasn't coming to no meeting?
That's correct.
The city did.
Okay, that's city Appalachia.
Yes.
I make a motion that all of them who don't wanna come to a workshop, we don't give them no letter of support.
That's.
Right, that's what I was saying, but I'm saying that without having the workshop. Do y'all still want a workshop, even though the city of Apalachicola is not gonna participate?
What he's saying is, if they don't, if everybody cuts it down to two million, which the city of Appalachia said they wouldn't, and there's not really no sense, really no sense in having a workshop, because everybody's committed to cutting it down to two million or less.
I'm good with that.
I'm just trying to say, if y'all don't have a meeting, that.
They don't need to have. Well, let me ask you a question. With the city of Appalachia and with the city of Carabel and with Franklin County, they received their letters from the Triumph Board, right?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, do the school boards?
Not yet, they haven't yet.
Okay, so, so they're not.
So I have to come back for, yeah, we have to come back.
They're not in the stage that we are.
They don't get around to.
Right, right. So I just wanna make this clear with everybody, that, you know, that's the reason why you got some, and then that, and I think that if I wrote, I mean, if I read clearly on that letter from the city of Appalachia, they were looking like five point, five million dollars worth of projects.
Yes. And so we said, we, the county basically said, we'll support the two million. They said, well, we don't wanna prioritize, so we're not gonna ask for any.
They want everything.
That's their decision, that's their prerogative.
So, so would you need a motion to send the letters of support like they are for these limited numbers?
I would, yeah, I think the record needs to reflect that you all are satisfied that you don't need a workshop, and for these projects that I've outlined here, the city of Apalachicola, city of Carabel's projects, FSU, and the county project, for us to issue a letter of support when they were.
Whenever they need it.
Whenever they.
Whenever they get through the full-blown application, as long as they're below the two million that the county asks them to do.
Right.
None with Appalachia. None with Appalachia.
Yeah, as long as it's ten millions or less, we can, we can do it, that's what the board agreed to.
Do you make, did you make a? Mr. Jones, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion?
What's the, what's the motion?
The motion is.
To issue my letter of support.
At the time that these entities that have been outlined, that have come at or under the two million dollar cap that we've asked them to do, that we would give them the letter of support at the time that it's advantageous for them to receive.
If Appalachia don't come to two million, they don't get support.
That's correct.
And they're not coming.
Okay.
They're gonna tell us they won't come.
So we do have a motion and second on the floor, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries.
You know, don't they, don't they get a percentage of who writing them grants?
I don't know, Triumph said they ain't paying for no.
Triumph said they doing that.
Triumph said they ain't paying for no consulting. I don't know how they gonna get their money.
So you just, so we'll do those, the school board may come shortly, I mean, maybe in a few weeks, they'll actually be here. Well, that's the only thing that's certainly, okay.
We know.
Well, this man, the city of Appalachia, no good will, you ain't got so much money, and you gonna split it. And they done asked for more than they part of the split with all these, with the school board. You got the school board, you got the city of Carabel, you got the city of Appalachia, and the county. How much money you get?
Well.
And you got TDC that could possibly wanna do something. Very eligible, too.
What is?
It's fifteen million dollars total that they've allocated for Franklin County. We'd like to get more than that, but fifteen million is a middle.
Well, five million dollars is way more than fifteen million dollars for five people.
That's the whole point of having a cap, that's correct.
That's why you do the cap. They know that, I mean, they, that don't make sense.
Okay, let me go to the last item, just for your information, actually, two more items. So, for the board, the results of the March sixteenth Triumph meeting, I attended in Milton. The Triumph staff presented a recommendation to fund one ten million dollar project for the Port of Panama City. They have in the pipeline four workforce projects they think might be presented at the next Triumph meeting. If those are approved, it would be in Triumph, acting on five out of the some hundred and twenty pre-applications they've already received. Triumph staff did acknowledge that full applicants are slow in coming in, and part of that reason is the difficulty in generating economic benefits that Triumph will accept. Franklin County may very well run into that same problem, but your staff, being me and Mark, will be meeting with Triumph staff tomorrow to go over our army projects. Franklin County may very well run into that same problem, but your staff, being me and Mark, will be meeting with Triumph staff tomorrow to go over our Army projects. I'll let you all know the outcome of that tomorrow afternoon. I'm not sure if it will be necessary for me or anybody to attend future Triumph meetings. Public comment comes at the end of the meeting, and after all the action regarding projects concluded, there's no interchange, there's no opportunities to answer questions. Just at Triumph meeting, the staff, it's a very tight meeting, the staff answers questions of the chairman, and that's it, so, so we'll just see. If, unless it's necessary, we may not have to go to those, all those Triumph meetings.
Yeah, and, and if, when you eat it out, if it's five minutes, that's three million dollar people.
Right.
And they ask for five.
Correct.
I mean, but they say we not doing five.
Right.
Man, I ain't thinking about that.
Okay, item number four, inform the board that we opening bids on May first for the final rebuilding of Gulf Shore Boulevard. This is a theme of a project for which the county will have to contribute twelve and a half percent of the cost, and the county costs will come out of the ballpark trust fund. And my last item is, I'd like board approval to send Whitney to Levy County, to the big city of Bronson, for one night, to overnight, so she can go to some restore training in Levy County. It's being run by the US Treasury.
Is that moved, Professor?
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Lockley, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And I apologize to take so long.
That's all right, we're kind of getting used to it. All right, Mr. Morong. County Coordinator report.
Yeah, um, firstly, I want to clarify something for the record, uh, when the gentleman from Carrigan Ingram, he stood there and said they were asked to come here, that's not necessarily what happened. They asked us to get on the agenda, so this is a point of-
Yeah, I caught that too, but I didn't say that.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't ask them to come here, all right, okay, so firstly, Weems update, uh, as of Monday, the operating account balance is a hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. Payroll is due tomorrow, and we'll reduce that balance by a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The balance in the money market account is three hundred and fifty-three thousand and nineteen dollars. Uh, I'm repeating a sentence here, I said at the last meeting, there's a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar dish payment that is expected, but has not been released as yet. Inform the board that Mr. Cooper and I are looking at options that would allow Weems to possibly provide more benefits to both the hospital workers and emergency medical services workers. This matter will be discussed at the March twenty-ninth Weems Board of Directors meeting, it will include the results, I, I will include the results of that discussion in my April third, uh, report. And this is to address Commissioner Lockley, what he was saying, you know, yes, we know there are issues, but we're working on them, that, I mean, we don't necessarily discuss them every single time, because there are a lot of things going on, but what I will not do, commissioners, I'll be very clear about this, I will not look for a resolution for one department, and then leave the others hanging, that's, that's not, that's not how we do things. And they've been together for, for, they're intertwined, they work together for, for so long, they need each other, and I look at them as one group, until I hear different-
I think if one gets in the hospital, people should get it, they shouldn't be left out.
Yes, and if, if, until I hear different from this board, that's my approach, and that'll always be my approach. Item number C, inform the board that I've received a proposal from Sacred Heart for healthcare management in Franklin County. This model is different from what has been proposed by Community Hospital Corporation and by Tallahassee Memorial Hospital. I would present all three proposals to the Weems Board at their regular meeting on Thursday, March twenty-ninth, and include their feedback on my April third report. So I want to be clear, we have, we now have two models, before we had the one model where we had a management group, and then at some point it would transition into a lease-to-own, and then it would be backed by a network of some sort, so, uh, right now for one, it's CHC would possibly HCA as their, as their, their network. And, uh, we all know Mr. Jim Coleman left CHC, he's now the CEO of Alliant. TMH is staying to us, they will wait out, there's a compete clause, they would like to wait that out and work with Alliant to service us. Now Sacred Heart sent their proposal yesterday, which is totally different from that, where they want to, uh, build a building and then create a, a agency, and et cetera, et cetera. I will, uh, again, take that to the Weems Board, get some feedback, and bring it back to the next board at this meeting, where you guys could have more discussion that will support the, uh, that will include feedback from the Weems Board.
Michael, real quick, any comments in the boardroom? Uh, I'd like to replace Jim Batrack on the hospital board with Ms. Kristen Anderson, I'd like somebody here, I guess, to make a motion.
I make a motion?
How many motions second y'all going to make?
I didn't say nothing, Chairman.
I second the motion and make the motion.
Commissioner Sanders made the motion, Commissioner Lockley and Commissioner Massey made the second. Uh, I would like to thank Jim Batrack for his service at the hospital board, uh, he, he's been on there for, what, four years now? I think he's done well, and it's just time for us to move to a different person, different representative, as we have a new hospital board chairman, this is Mr. Morong. So, uh, I would like to make that recommendation, we do have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, anything else?
Now, is there, well, before we move away from the hospital, is there any other board members that need to be?
I will bring it, at the next meeting, I'll bring everybody that needs to be renewed-
Okay.
In the terms there, and I'll gather that information.
We've already done some, or a couple meetings ago?
Yeah, well, we added two members a couple meetings ago, that you just replaced the members, I'll see who, what are the terms.
Should be getting down, never, okay.
You don't know where to-
There might be one vacancy left in at large, but all that I'll have for you at the next meeting.
Okay.
If that's what includes your question.
Okay, proceed.
We, we didn't know where it took him, this is three, right?
Yes, sir, yes, uh, Pastor David Walker represents this.
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed, I want, I want to bring up something just to let all the rest of you know. I was speaking with Commissioner Sandy Quinn from Gulf County, I have a pretty good relationship with him, because he's been St. Joe's basketball coach for the last several years, so I'm always running to him on that avenue, now we're both servants commissioners. But I, I discussed with him, to make sure that nobody thinks we're trying to do anything wrong, and it's all above board, about trying to set up a, a meeting with Mr. Houston Whitfield, which runs the EMS over at Gulf County. And I do that because I see Gulf County not only as our, as our neighbor, but where we're wide, they're deep, they're, they're structured a lot like us. And I want to set up that meeting myself, and I want to get Mr. Michael Morong to go with me, but I wanted to let you guys, you know, have input, or, you know, I'm just trying to find out facts, um, I think you know me by now, after a year of doing it, if there's a, a number to be solved, or a fact to be found, I'm going to do my best to find it, so. I just want to mention to you guys while we're here talking about the hospital.
I'm sorry, I was writing, uh, item number two, board action approved and authorized the chairman's signature on the following contracts. All three, I'll go through them, and you guys can make one motion, if there's no objection from the attorney. It's a twenty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollar contract with Oliver Sperry for repairs and renovations to the Weems Memorial Emergency Room Dock Area. Proposals were open at your February twentieth meeting, that was the only bidder, uh, we've gone through, the, uh, Mark has gone through the contract, so we're ready to move forward with that. Uh, item B is a forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollar contract, also with Oliver Sperry, for renovations to the county's public defender's office. After opening the proposals on February twentieth, staff and Mr. Doug Schuler, the project architect, decided it was necessary to reduce the scope of work so that the project cost would meet the forty-five thousand dollar budget amount. And finally, it's a forty-six thou, forty-six thousand, four hundred and eight dollar and twenty-two cent, uh, cents contract with Dewberry for construction, engineering, and inspection services for the Bay Shore Drive sidewalk project. Dewberry was ranked the highest out of the firms that applied, and has negotiated a contract about which staff. Your approval will be contingent in FDOT's on their approval.
Pleasure, the board.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massey, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item three, inform the board that based on under run, some of the quantities in the paving contractor's contract, there is enough unused money to extend the length of the Mill Road paving project by five hundred linear feet for no additional cost. Since this additional paving does not extend the project north of White Way, which is the original agreement, and there is no additional cost, FDOT has no, it has no issues with this extension, and a change order isn't necessary. We addressed item four earlier, uh, item five, item six, bring us down to item seven. Board action to authorize the chairman's signature on the twenty-eighteen Spring Rural County Grant for the Sheriff's Department in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-four cents. This grant is a Tri-County E nine-one-one system maintenance grant, and will be used to pay annual maintenance costs for the county's nine-one-one system. Mrs. Raddick was here for the longest while, but I asked her to, I told her she could go back to work, I didn't want the sheriff to arrest me for giving it to employees, so, uh, but it's, it's a standard grant.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Sanders, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries.
We did item eight, item nine, I'm going to need some help from the chairman and Mr. Pierce, one of those things. The county received notice that the Florida State of University Coastal Marine Lab received verification from exemption from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to install oyster recruitment structures on the surface of existing degrading oyster reef habitat within Alligator Harbor. Uh, a copy of that letter and all the supporting documents are in your packet. Okay, Mr. Chairman, please explain-
I think, I think that relates to, uh, trying, trying to get things done, where they can do oyster, oyster spat recruitment, which will be used in the hatchery process.
Right.
And all about the application of putting in for Triumph, so, it's not like they're going to do it tomorrow, but they have been granting exemption to be able to do that-
Okay.
On an existing degrading oyster ball right off the marine, uh, marine lab right there, which you can see on your iPad exactly where it's at, so.
Okay.
No big issue there.
There's no questions, item ten, Congresswoman Frederica Wilson of Florida's District Twenty-four would, would once again like the board to support a proclamation recognized in May fourteenth, twenty-eighteen, as Child Welfare Professional Recognition Day. What action to authorize the chairman's signature on this proclamation?
So moved. So, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Lockley, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item eleven, board action to appoint Mr. Jerry Jackson to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill one of the alternate seats. Mr. Jackson lives in Commissioner Massey's district, and as an alternate member, will only vote when there are not enough regular members to meet the core requirements. He will take the place of, place of Mr. Roger William Burgess, who moved away, Commissioner Massey is familiar with Mr. Jackson.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Sanders, any further discussion? Mike, he'll also be able to vote in case of a, a planning and zoning member had a conflict.
Yes.
Even though they're there on a particular issue.
Let me think about that.
If you had, if you had a quorum, you had a basic quorum, and then one of them had a conflict on a particular issue, this alternate could then vote.
He could if he was there in the city, most likely, if there's a quorum, we would call him, say, oh, no, no, that's how we do it, we let him show up and stay in city, and he stays-
That way he gets acclimated to what's going on.
Yeah, but there's no need for him to vote if there's a, like, if one of you have a-
If you got a quorum and, and all members are able to vote, it's one thing, if you got a quorum and, and one mem, one member of that quorum may not be able to vote on a particular sub, subject.
He doesn't have to vote, because it's like, what are you guys, do you have an ethic?
You don't lose your quorum just because you're disqualified from a vote.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, sorry, but that's-
Yeah, that's fine, that, that, it'll, it'll work in the same way the manager you guys-
He would still be present, he would still, you know, be learning the ropes, he just would not be participating as a member, if there's already a quorum present.
Okay, so you don't lose your quorum, okay.
Yes, we're good. Uh, item twelve, we address, uh, thirteen is form the board, I'll be attending Thursday's, Thursday's full council board meeting for the Appalachian Regional Planning Council with Commissioner Jones. Uh, number fourteen, inform the board that Mr. Richard Williams and Mr. Antonio Jefferson of Opportunity Florida will be on your April third meeting agenda. They would like to discuss the possibility of Franklin County joining Opportunity Florida. This affairs thinks that's, uh, a movement from Triumph to try and get this ball, the board, the county involved in some economic agency, is that correct, sir?
Yeah, this is, I mean, this, I mean, there, and I'm not saying obvious course the answer, but what, what the Triumph staff sees Franklin County, we're a little bit of a backing, we're not members of Florida's Great Northwest, we're not members of Opportunity Florida, and we're not members of, there's another economic entity that we're not party to. So they were trying to find somebody who, who would come down here, Opportunity Florida used to be here, so we didn't buy Opportunity Florida, they, they, but they were getting his messages from Triumph, and that's, that's why they're coming down to check out the man.
Okay, Coach.
We'll see what they have to offer.
Yeah.
And that's the reason we're not a member of none of these organizations, they never bring it up to their table.
Right.
Yeah, and the thing about it is, is you haven't had anybody come and ask us to do it since then, have you? It's been years since we've seen anybody from Opportunity Florida.
Well, let's see what they have to say, that's, that's one of their-
Yeah, and just see what they got, so, we can always say yes or no.
And with my, my item fifty, we talked about the Appalachia Airport Wings and Wheels Aviation Day, uh, which is on Saturday from eleven to three, which is also the day of balls, so that's a full day for the commissioners.
Yeah, that's a bad, uh-
And that is my report.
Any comments from the commissioners?
Just, just one question, Michael, we've got to do our ethics, I thought the City of Carabel was going to do an ethics and invite us.
I, I did, I did talk to, well, I already talked to our ethics, the attorney that came, he said he was waiting for the legislative session to be over, look at any new bills that might affect the ethics training.
Danko.
Yes, and he's going to contact me, um, uh, probably later this month to set one up.
I thought we was going to do one with Carabel, because Carabel said that we had done it the last two years.
Oh.
And that, and that they, they had one, and I want to say, I thought they said March twenty-fourth or something.
I thought Danko's done there, you know?
Yeah.
He done, he, that he done the one in Stocktop, he hasn't done one for City of Carabel, they come over with us last time. And the City of Carabel said they would put one on this time, since we put one on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't you remember?
Yeah, the city hall, there in Carabel.
You don't mind, I mean.
Call, call city hall and see when they got it scheduled.
Courtney will be back in tomorrow, you can call her.
Okay.
I'm glad, because, well, let me ask a question, Mr. Schuler.
Yes, ma'am.
Since I'm going to be retiring, do I need to take the ethics?
Nope.
No.
I'm just kidding, I don't know.
No, I'd go, I'd go, y'all have to stick to that stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll bring you down.
You gotta come, Dan.
You gotta come.
Hey, I'm a death, as long as you can get, I don't think I can learn any more about ethics than what I have in these last twenty years, so. But anyway, that, I mean, that's a question to ask, you didn't know.
Okay, I'll verify and let you know, ASAP, I'll have to call you about that training, okay, as soon as Courtney gets back in.
Yeah, that keeps you from having to do it, I love it.
We're down to commissioner comment.
Right, Mr. Chairman, I did have one item, just record keeping, one, uh, present to the clerk of the court, this is the recorded deed from the St. Joe Corporation to Franklin County conveying two parcels of land at Island View Motel Park. These are the two parcels on the north side of the road that abut the county's parcel, the south one on the north side of the road. Those three units, or those three parcels combined will give the county enough room on the north side of the road to hopefully relocate Highway ninety-eight northward, eliminating that dangerous curve, and giving the public more room on the south side of any relocated road, uh, for public purposes, so, just wanted to give this to the clerk. Got wrapped up that, so the third parcel, we, we're still waiting, we're, we're still meeting with DOT, trying to get their bind to relocate the road. That third parcel would be, would be donated, would be donated, when we get that in the fight with DOT.
And I just have one comment, that's what you call a vision, a vision, having a vision.
For twenty years, took about twenty years, but-
Any, any commissioner comment?
I would like to comment about what you were just telling me, uh, I hope that happens pretty quickly, because there is still a plan afoot from the ARPC's part of, that's bringing a sidewalk project through, through the area, so, they, they need to move the road ahead of that, would be really great.
So. I got, I got one. Look like, and on this economic development thing, the way, look like we on the back burner. And, doesn't happen, and we need, as soon as later, we, we just going to have to help the people, I'm, I'm tired of seeing these kids got to leave here every year. Every year, you, I've been seeing this, ten, ten, fifteen years, they go to school here, and then they got to leave because of no job. Give them an opportunity to have the chance, that we get something going, and they can stay if they choose to, if they can go away if they choose. But let's get something going for them, they can have some kind of working. Uh, I'm going to make a motion that we get our own economic development office open up here. Everybody else just about got it, and we need one in Franklin County.
What is that? I missed, I, I missed.
We need an economic development, I mean, we need a office, we need a, a place him, got our own, just like a T D T, the economic. We need an officer in there trying to find y'all for this community.
Well, I mean, yes, of course it's-
They got it in every county.
Oh, yeah. I would pause off before it would, would be able to provide assistance, or somebody else might also, I don't know yet, but I mean, you're exactly right, other counties-
This director, he'll go out and look for, for us some on, on his own.
Yeah, I go along with Mr. Norah, second it.
He, he'll look for jobs on his own, he don't need them, that, that's his job, to go out there and look for jobs, that'll be his job.
Any other commissioner comment?
I just want to clarify something, so is the motion being made to try to reach out to someone else to help us form some kind of economic development?
No, I'm reaching, we form on my own.
Okay, so it's going to be a county department, or?
Yeah.
How are we going to fund it, how much are you going to pay them, what are the credentials they got to have?
They got, we'll take the, see just around the county, see what they think.
So, are you guys asking me to basically do a study, you, you want information as how much it's going to cost?
Yeah.
What, what, what they do around us, you know, if you can afford it or not, is that what, what you guys are asking me? I'm trying to be-
That's what you'd have to do, you'd have to do a study on this.
And then bring that back to the board, bring that information back to the board, this would be the cost.
Yeah, because I, I mean-
We didn't already studied it a few years ago.
Yeah, I do want to say something on that, and, and it's not one way or the other, but the City of Carabel had their EDC. I think David Butler was the head of their, uh, economic development, so we need to look at how maybe they're doing it.
How it's structured.
Yeah, or something like this, so you might want to, you know, look.
Yeah, my concern is, we, we create that, and, and I'm all about jobs, but they're going to run into the same issues that we've talked about earlier today with no four-lane highway, and you don't have a train, workforce, all these other things, you're going to pay somebody a hundred thousand dollar a year to come back and tell you the same thing.
I don't, I don't know, there's some, they could, they could come in there and find some smaller jobs, and then, it, it's small jobs, you ain't got to have no hit no home run with no hundred jobs, you start off with ten, five, ten.
Right, I had three different people at the rib cook-off over the weekend, one of them was in construction, one of them was in, or two of them was actually in the restaurant business. All these people had jobs available, couldn't find no help, nobody wants to work.
I got something to say.
Their jobs are available, but nobody wants to fill the job.
I went cleaning houses this weekend on St. George Island, because a man couldn't get none of his workers, nobody to work, and I cleaned houses on St. George Island this weekend.
That's what I'm talking about, there's jobs, I mean, it ain't high-paying jobs, but there's jobs out there, but they can't find nobody to fill them.
Don't, no, no, that house clean was good, that's good money for somebody.
Mm-hmm.
But nobody wants to work.
Nobody wanted to work, I, I, if I didn't have a job, I'd do it every day, it's good money.
We are good.
Yeah, we do have a motion second on the floor for you to look at this issue, uh, Mr. Morong, county staff.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I'd like board to be back pretty soon, within a month.
The next meeting, if I could.
Oh, good.
I'll try, if I can, I'll let you know ahead of time, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Any other commissioner comment?
Just one, one comment, I have to say I was proud to have all the, and I know Commissioner Massey was too, have all the commissioners in the Camp Gordon Johnson Parade. We had a good time, didn't we, fellas?
Yeah.
And we had a good time over there, and I'm so proud to see that, though, that was a good parade, a good parade.
Any other commissioner comment? Meet in the journal.